At this time, I'd like to open up the regular session of the City of Crescent City's council meeting for Monday, May 7th. Could you please call the roll? Madam Clerk?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall. Councilmember Shalong.
Here.
Councilmember Hawley.
Here.
Mayor Protam Enia.
Here.
And Mayor Murray.
Here, thank you. And I have asked Councilmember Hawley to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first item on our agenda is Recognition of Older Americans Month for May 2012. And we have Diane Bennett and Tom Cochrane here to accept the recognition. Recognition of Older Americans Month, May 12, 2012. Whereas the City of Crescent City is a community that includes 3,522 citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the older adults in Crescent City are the roots from which our community grows who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live, and whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities, and whereas the older adults in Crescent City should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation, and whereas our community can provide that recognition and respect by enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community, emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community, and now therefore be it resolved that the City of Crescent City, California hereby recognizes May 2012 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections with each other and enrich our community's quality of life. Signed, myself, Catherine Murray, Mayor. And let me sign it, and I will bring it right out to you.
Thank you.
And if you have a public comment you'd like to make?
Not really. Rick and I have served together a long time as friends and stuff, and he always wants me to say something nice about him.
You have the floor.
We appreciate being recognized, and thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you. Is that right? Martha from closed session?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Any public comment on the consent calendar as a whole will be accepted. There's a limit of three minutes on the entire consent calendar, but not each one individually three minutes. Three minutes for the entire consent calendar. So, before we get started, the city manager wanted to...
Yeah, I'd like to request to hear item number seven separately. On the consent calendar, there's a couple of updates we'd like to provide to the council.
Okay, so we'll pull that, item number seven, and consider it separately from the consent calendar, items two through eight, with the exclusion of item number seven.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to request that we segregate item number eight as well.
Is the rest of the council in improvement with that?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, we'll pull items seven and eight, and now Mr. Miles is your chance for your three minutes for the consent calendar.
Mayor Murray?
Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, my name's Richard Miles, and I am a resident of the city, not the county. So, I...it bothers me when I hear from you that my city isn't going to honor the Brown Act. And I want to know if you, by the next meeting, will show me in the Brown Act where you can limit people's three minutes on agendized items even though they're on the consent limit for three minutes for the whole consent agenda. So, what I'd like to talk about today is two things, number six and number eight. I will wait till number eight because you pulled it, and when you guys discuss it, I will make my comment. But on number six, I'd like to make a suggestion. Today, I saw something downtown that has some way bothered me. A few years ago, a city manager got up the hot idea of putting whiskey barrels all through the downtown. And at that time, the decision was made that the business owners would be responsible for maintaining them. Well, throughout the summertime and the winter, an excuse I hear is the business community doesn't have the time to take care of them. A few business people do, but I think the rest of them are blight, and I think the city should remove them. Then, I think it's time that this council think again about dissolving bid. And I would hope you would let the two new ladies that got elected by the majority of their membership to review the concept of doing away with bid. Because without funds that you people...am I done? Because a little green light's...
I can't see it from here.
Because if you people don't collect dues, be honest, what in hell can they do?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Billy K. Gavin Tigert, current president of the Downtown Crescent City Business Improvement District. I just wanted to take a minute...I can't see...and say thanks to the Girl Scouts that came down today and did some planting. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Oh.
They did a good job.
They did a very good job. So, I wanted to commend them for partnering with us on that. And our website is finally up. It is no www, it's visitdowntowncc.com. And the content is already outdated, pending what you guys say tonight. So, I'll be updating that shortly, but I did want you guys to know that that is up. And my third thing is, we're excited to have the two ladies that are up for appointment, and the third, Tracy, is over here as well, for appointment tonight. We're excited that they're turning the page and willing to work with us as we move forward and get us rolling in the right direction again. So, that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to the community. And I did see the Girl Scouts walking around with plants and thanked them, and they look so cute. And the adult supervision, they were all really happy to be doing that for us. So, thank you, Girl Scouts, and the adults who assisted them with helping to beautify our downtown city. I've had a request, and I don't know if we need to pull this from the consent calendar in order to do it, so I'm going to ask Martha, from Councilmember Shalong, to have the bid elected committee members come up and explain why they want to serve on bid. Do we need to pull that from the consent agenda?
I just thought it'd be nice for the public to actually to have them just introduce themselves so people know who we're actually appointing to the advisory board. And if you'd like to share anything with us, that would be great.
So, do we need to pull it first?
It's just part of discussion.
Yeah, if you don't want to pull it, you could act on it first and then have them come up afterwards and introduce themselves, if that would be okay.
Sure, that's fine.
All right. Any other public comment then on the consent agenda? Seeing no public comment, could you please...
I move to approve items two through six.
Second.
Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Enia.
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. And so, then we'll discuss item number seven that had been pulled from the consent agenda first.
This would be where we could do this.
I thought we could do it under public comment.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Barnes, our city engineer, to do some kind of overview discussion on this item and update some information in the staff report. Thank you.
The...what we received in May of 2011 was a order from the state on violations for the wastewater treatment plant. And they totaled $174,000, and most of it was, as I mentioned in my staff report, for discrepancies in the ocean pH and dissolved oxygen around our plant and in other areas of the ocean. Because that is such an arbitrary thing in the ocean, we had that removed from our current NPDES permit. So, in order to deal with this fine, we set up what they call compliance projects, and we really had a need for this storage facility. So, the compliance project was to construct this chemical storage, which when we clean our membranes, we have a strong bleach, basically, that cleans the membranes. And instead of taking that 5,000 gallons and quickly dumping it into the stream, we meter it into the stream to keep from killing all the biology in the plant. So, that's what this unit is for. And the reason we pulled it from the agenda, I mean, from the consent calendar, is because when I was writing the staff report, I had a six-month number of $5,000, and I had thought that was a month. And so, I thought I'd correct that and say it's about $900 a month instead of the 5,000 I had in the staff report. So, that's what this is about. And as you can see, the action would authorize Stover engineers to design the facility. It allows city staff to go out to bid. It would allow the purchase of two 8,000-gallon tanks. And so, when we got the bids back in, we would also come back to the city council and bring the bids and for you guys to authorize going ahead with that.
I'm happy to hear that it was 900.
Yeah.
I'm the one that asked Gene about spending five grand a month. I thought...
Well, I was a little embarrassed by that because I should have gone up and checked instead of relying on my memory for it, so...
We all make mistakes.
Yeah.
But I was just curious, why...was there a certain reason we waited a year to do this?
Just we're busy.
Just because of the treatment plant coming up on board, so...
Well, yes. We wanted to wait until the contractor was done with his work, and once that was done, we could have done it. But we've been doing a lot of other things, and we were...in order to keep the cost to as low a cost as possible, we were going through various ways of designing this facility so that we can keep the cost down to this $164,000, as close to that as we can get it. And so, we've been monitoring...we right now are renting the tank, and we're monitoring how it works so that we can design it the way we think it should be designed, that works. So, we're kind of going through a couple of things, observing so we get the right design, and then just finding the time to do it. But as you can see, the time's kind of running out on us.
So, am I correct in thinking that Stover Engineering actually already did a basic design?
Yeah.
And now we're updating that design, and that's why we don't have to go out to bid for that design?
Yeah. For a couple of reasons. One is Stover knows the plant very well, has the base plans so that they can put the design together quickly. And then I also like using local people if I can, somebody that's in town here. For all those reasons, we thought they would be the right choice for doing it. And then also, if we went out for an RFP on a job this small, it takes a long time. We don't really have that much time, and it isn't that big a job. And so, it's a T&amp;M job. They're the logical candidates for that job.
And we're not required to go out to bid?
No.
Thank you.
Is 250,000 for these two 8,000-gallon tanks?
No. The two 8,000-gallon tanks are about $115,000. And then, there is...I put $20,000 for Stover Engineering, and they think it's going to be 17, and I'm hoping it's a little less. And so, then, the other component is the contractor's work. And so, as soon as I had the plans, I put down $110,000 for the contractor's work. I'm hoping it's less than that. And...but once I get the plans, it'll be easier to estimate, and then we'll just put it out to bid. We won't have to estimate it at that point. We'll get some actual bids, and then I'll come back to the council with those.
Who will be paying for this?
Excuse me?
Who will be paying for this?
The sewer fund pays for this.
Does that come from the ratepayers?
Yes, it does. And so, we either pay the $164,000 in cash to the state, or we build something. And we've decided to build something. At least, I thought that was the right choice.
And I'd like to talk about that for just a second for the public's knowledge. So, what he's saying is that we actually were fined that much money by the state, and instead of having to pay the fine, they allow you to actually do a project that's equal to or more than the amount of the fine. And that project is supposed to, you know, help fix the problem that you got fined for. So, I think that's good for people to know.
And Madam Mayor, if I can add to that, this was a project that we approved in this year's budget. So, it's already been budgeted in the sewer account to complete this project.
I'd just like to add one more comment, and that is that back in '07, when a group of people, including myself, met with Jim Barnes and other people from the city, we had expressed our concern about how expensive it would be to maintain the MBR system. And so, I'd just like to say again that our concerns seem to be warranted. Thank you.
I have a comment. This...I was looking in your report here, and I remember, this is back from 2006 when we received this notice. And at that time...am I correct?
2011.
Well... No, we weren't meeting the standard. Wasn't that 2006?
No, I don't think this one was in 2006. I think it was probably in...from about 2009 and '10 was when this violation took place.
Okay. Where was I reading? I was reading...oh, that's when they adopted the requirements.
That was our...we had an NPDES permit.
Right.
That was in 2006. And then, we...every five years, you have a new permit, and the other one was 2011. So, that we just had completed.
Right. Okay. You know, this makes lots of sense to me, and I appreciate you putting this packet together. The only thing I'm wondering about is the timeline for the work. You have a lot of things happening on July 2nd?
Yeah.
And is that going to be problematic, given that so much activity that time?
Well, I say, when we do these timelines, of course, they're approximations. What I have happening on July 2nd is I have the tanks coming. If we order them now, they'll be coming at around that time. And also, I have the contractor starting. Those are two kind of independent things. And the tanks, he probably won't need the tanks until August 1st. So, we're just getting them...and you never know when things are out of your hands what's going to happen, and you don't want that holding up the project.
So, you're giving it a month's leeway.
I am.
Could be a part of the parade.
Now, the other part, when you talked...when we were talking about the MBR and the issues, we have had very little, very few issues with the MBR, and it's really produced very good water. I was also a little concerned about that whole process because it's a fairly complicated process, yet I've been pleasantly surprised at how few issues we've had and how well it's functioned.
Is there any other technical questions for staff? Okay. If not, I will...thank you, Jim. Open this up for public comment. Is there a public comment, which will be limited to three minutes on this topic? Okay, hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move to approve item number seven on the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall.
No.
Councilmember Hawley.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Enia.
Yes.
Mayor Murray.
Yes. Motion carries four to one. Thank you. Onto item number eight, which was also pulled from the consent calendar.
Ms. Westfall, or Councilmember Westfall, pulled that item, so...
Yeah, a couple of residents called to remind me that they thought we had already paid for this work, and so, if it comes to vote, I'm going to abstain until I can find that paperwork and be sure that we haven't already paid for it.
Why don't you just ask staff?
I can have Mr. Barnes address that. These items have been...
Please do.
When you start a new industrial facility, those are...there's a lot of pumps and motors and electrical equipment, and if you have procedures that aren't followed correctly and they're not specified, then you can have issues that come up at the plant, you can have spills, and you can have violations like the one we're dealing with here. And every plant has its own personality, and it has...because it has...each plant has its own key equipment, it has things that need to be maintained, things that are looked at every day. And so, to address this plant's particularness, we are hiring this particular person to go in, write their standard operating procedures, write our standard maintenance procedures, write procedures so that staff does not feel the liberty to make technical changes in the plant without going through proper steps. And so, what we're doing is formalizing the procedures and maintenance at the plant. And the particular person that we're hiring to help us with that has been in the power industry for a long time with industrial plants. And you might think there's a big difference, but really, there's not a lot of difference when you're looking at an industrial setting and the way they handle...the staff is handled and the administration is handled in those settings. There's not a lot of difference in most industries. And so, we feel that it would be appropriate, since we've invested all this money at the treatment plant, to make sure that plant maintains its value and maintains its technical advantages and that it's also operated in the way it was meant to be operated. And so, again, we're formalizing all those procedures with having this person come in. And it helps educate our staff to a little higher degree of professionalism that we think a plant of this technical quality deserves.
So, have we created this document previously and paid for it?
What we have...what I believe Donna is discussing is our operation and maintenance, electronic operation and maintenance manual. And we have that. What I want to do is make sure that O&amp;M manual is that the operators understand how to use it, and that it's set up in such a manner that they're having to use it, and it's more automatic. And maybe it's a little easier for them. We can spend the time to condense and make it easier for them to understand, yet at the same time, making them familiar enough with it that they feel comfortable with it. And so, we have the document. I think it could be easier for them to use, and they need a little education in that. And so, that was...that is part of what we're doing here.
Okay. Operations and maintenance manual, wasn't that prepared by Stover Engineering?
It was prepared by Kennedy Jenks Engineering, yes. And they do a lot of these. It's kind of a living document. You can go into it, take pictures of new equipment, change the way that...the information in it. So, it's our document for us to use, and so, I believe it...to make it a little friendlier, we can...and I think it's a very good document, by the way. I think with just a little more work, it'll become even better for the guys to use.
So, we already paid Kennedy Jenks for an operations and maintenance manual? Is that what you said?
I did say that.
Okay, so, is there any reason why they couldn't have prepared what you're now proposing we pay Tom Rommsberg for?
Well, I will say this. I think if we would have asked them to do what I'm asking Tom to do, they could have done that, yes. It would have probably cost us many times more than it will for Tom. Plus, I get the personal attention I need. It isn't just somebody coming in and doing it and then leaving. This is a much better setting, a much better situation than we would have had if I would have had Kennedy Jenks do it.
I think I understand that you're trying to finesse this so it's more user-friendly, but how much did we already pay to Kennedy Jenks?
Well, I'm not exactly sure, but I think it was a little over $100,000 to put the O&amp;M manual together for us and make it interactive and do all the things we needed it to do.
Okay. So, that's it? This is a document that's going to be updated and made more user-friendly and include more of what the plant is doing now versus what was planned?
No. I wouldn't say it like that. The document is exactly like we want, but what I wanted to do and what I was concerned about is that the guys aren't necess- concerned about is that the guys aren't necessarily comfortable using it. They go to it, they use it for various things, but I think it could be used a lot more than it's currently being used. And so, that was one of the reasons that I'm having Tom come in. He is used to coming into a new plant that is just getting started and setting up the procedures for that plant, because like I said, every plant is different. And then, as well as working with the guys with this manual so that it becomes even more user-friendly, he has the ability to take that manual and make it better for the guys, and work with the guys so that it, it works for them individually. And, and that is meaning interviews, seeing how things work, and, and putting the things together to make it user-friendly, and something that they use, but also included in all the...
Something they're not afraid of.
Exactly.
Right.
That, that they feel comfortable with. And then, the other part of it is, we need a standard operating procedure so that people do things in the way they need to be done. That means if you, you're supposed to open this valve and throw this switch and go close that valve after that, and then, the procedures you have for various operations, and you have key operations, we set up the procedures, and that's important for a lot of reasons. So, we have that, and, and the professionalism that we want from the guys, I wouldn't, I want that expressed, and to formalize things a little bit, I want that expressed. These are things that we never historically did at the plant, but now that we have a new plant that's much more technical, we need our guys to be that kind of people, doing that kind of thing, and so...
Well, I think, I think we're pretty lucky. This guy that we're referring to actually travels all around the world doing this work, and he's actually retired here, so he's going to charge us a fourth of what he charges normal clients because he lives here.
And he wants to do something for the community, and I think so too. I think we're very, very fortunate, and when I talk with him, I'm very impressed, and I learn a lot, and I know that our guys are, it'll be very valuable to them, and the amount of money we're talking about is very little compared to what we're going to get out of it.
It, it sounds like, like it would, it would maybe decrease our liability when it comes to OSHA issues and, and those kinds of factors. If we have a consultant, we can show that we've hired a consultant, it, there actually may be some cost savings in the long run.
Well, I think more, the idea is, if you have a standard operating procedure for something, and somebody comes in and doesn't do it the right way and consequently is hurt, then you say, well, they had a procedure, they didn't follow it, and that's what happened. You don't want it, you know, you don't look at it from, from, well, it protects the city, although it does, you look at it from the guy that's going to get hurt. You don't want something to happen to anybody, so, and, and that's the way we're trying to look at that.
Okay. And, and this gentleman will be doing actual training with our, with our staff?
Yes.
Good.
He'll train the staff.
Thirty-five dollars an hour for a consultant to train staff.
Isn't that wonderful? Yeah.
Madam Mayor, may I add, you know, just probably just a few words. I think Jim explained it very well, and it's more of an organizational change or cultural shift, you know, for our staff at, at the treatment plant on how we operate, and, you know, a lot of the things that, you know, and Mr. Barnes and I talk about, is, you know, this treatment plant needs to operate and look the same, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now that it did the day it opened. And, you know, we need to put those procedures in place. Right now, it's, it's a great opportunity for us. We have a new plant, a new facility, you know, we need to, you know, make sure the staff is well-trained and working all in sync together to make that happen. And as, you know, staff will turn over, you know, during that time as well, and these procedure manuals are going to be, you know, that, you know, cultural, you know, the culture of the treatment plant to carry that into the next 20, 30 years.
Any other technical questions for staff before I open this up for public comment? No? And I'll, I'll have some comments after we have our public comment. Is there a public comment on this matter? Mr. Miles, three minutes.
I want to thank Jim and Eric, because this morning when I went and reviewed the agenda, I asked some questions. And I started out kind of the same path Donna started today, but then I felt the explanation that I was given really answered my questions. But I'd like this gentleman, once we hire him, to do something else. We have a very complex wastewater treatment plant. We have different layers of operations there, and we have people with different types of licenses that their specialty and their license is in the treatment of all kinds of levels, from the sludge to the water that goes out to the ocean. I believe that when we built this plant, we forgot to do something, and I think we should use this gentleman to see what his opinion. I think we need a higher level of supervision at this sewer treatment plant. We actually need a director to run the daily operations of that plant. Yes, we have a class three operator, but I think we need somebody over him, because a good reason is for this, is the fine we got. We knew when we built that plant, we need to do something about the ammonia. We didn't do it, and we got fined, because the outfall line went in before we built the new treatment plant. When we built the new line, we should have looked at the levels of ammonia that were going to be discharged, the discharge line. We didn't do that. Jim's background is in civil engineering, he isn't in wastewater engineering. So, I think the city really needs to consider hiring somebody to oversee our plant.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this topic? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there other comments from the council before I ask for a motion? Okay. I'd like to make a few comments. I believe that this is a, a critical document that we need as an internal control for the plant. Any agency that I've ever worked for, we have policies and procedures in place that allow for staff to follow in a consistent manner, and I think it's really critical that we approve this tonight and be able to have a professional person come in and not only write the policies and procedures, but offer to train, train our staff as well, and I greatly appreciate it. So, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the Rose, Rosenberg for consulting work for, for the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Uh, no.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thanks. Motion carries four to one. At this time, I'll open it up to public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City of Crescent City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes, and I'd like to offer our new advisory board the first opportunities for public comment if they so wish. You'd have to come to the mic. None of you want to? Oh.
My name's Tracy Fensler. I'm from the county. It's Klamath, I think we're, and I got on the bid board because I thought it would be a interesting way to help the city that I live in, or not live in, but work in, and I thought it would be interesting to get to see the city grow within the bid district. I thought that would be really nice to make, see things go forward and to not have things just stall like they have been, so that's why I did it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. No other public comment from the bid, new bid advisory board? Okay, I'll open it up to the rest of the public for public comment. Richard?
I would like somebody in the city to purchase a little book. It's called The Earth Moves. It's by Amy Stewart, and if you don't know who Amy Stewart is, she's a regional writer. She lives in Arcata, California. She tells the story how Charles Darwin, towards the end of his life, studied earthworms. She gives a whole chapter on something that I think my city and, as you people sit on the Solid Waste Task Force, should really think about. We have a Class E, Class One bio solids that we're spending thousands of dollars each month to haul to White City. She tells the story in here how the city of Pacifica, and I'm going to get this old, Pacifica's got more people, more money, and everything like this, uses earthworms and sludge to make compost that they sell to the flower growers in Moss Landing. I'm aware, because I serve on the Solid Waste Task Force, that Hamrose is thinking about Why can't we think out of the box, talk to Hamrose, see if they will take our material for free, find a location where they could buy some earthworms, make a material that can be sold regionally, because people forget that there's flower industries in Medford, there are some in Smith River, and there's some in Arcata. I believe if we could make a product, it could be sold, and then the cost to the city of hauling material to White City would go down. So, if you don't believe me, pick up this wonderful little book.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close, close public comment. We have no public hearings, and now I'll move on to reports, and we have Mr. Jim Bernard. We have a, a letter requesting comments from SkyWest Airlines. Mr. Bernard?
Good evening, Councilman. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the DOT letter requesting elected official comment on our essential air service subsidy, which has been renewed for another two years with SkyWest, the only bidder on the project, as has been the case since the early 90s when we started this program. A little history, if I may, is the essential air service was a congressional carryover from the days when the airlines was regulated. The airlines submitted all their routes, and they had to serve all the legs that they asked for, and then the government gave them basically an exclusive contract for those legs. So, when they deregulated the airlines in 1978, they, Congress decided to hang on to the essential air service provided to small rural communities like this one, so we didn't lose service, which they all would have headed for big cities and left us high and dry without any airline service here. Now, this subsidy, subsidy has been in place since then, and is actually the cornerstone of our SkyWest airline service now, as you can see. When this, we were, when we initially were included in this program, they called it the Crescent City Airport, so naturally, the letter request came to the Crescent City, City Council, when it probably should have gone to Delano County, and now to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. But rather than change the legislation, we've just left it alone, because we didn't want to open that back up. So, at the suggestion of Mike Thompson, we left it alone and didn't go there. So, that's why you see it before you tonight for public comment. Basically, they were the only bidder, and were happy to have their service. I've written a letter for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and we'd like to see a letter from Crescent City as well, supporting that service. And if I could answer any questions specifically, I'd be happy to.
I'd just like to say, I, I like that they've, they've increased the flights to San Francisco from 12 to 14 per week. That's a, that's a good...
Yes, to a day, which is the minimum required by the subsidy.
Is that going to be seven days a week?
Yes.
That's good.
Yes.
It's been doing, we've been doing that for a while.
Yes, we have.
Okay, good.
This is the exact same bid that we had last year, as far as service and size airline, number of seats, that kind of thing.
Okay.
You might notice that the Sacramento route, the airline is keeping, but it's not part of the subsidy, so they, they could drop that at any point.
Sacramento route.
If they so decide, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Bernard?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, I will open this up for public comment. Is there a public comment on this topic? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council.
Move to direct staff to write a letter of support for the airline service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam, Madam Mayor, was that Anea or Hawley that made the second? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here, Jim. You might have missed your, your newscasting. And Sue. We'll move on to continuing business, which is item number 10. Consider waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 768 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding chapter 8.18 Noise Regulations to Title VIII Health and Safety of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
As you recall, that ordinance was originally introduced at April 2nd of this year, to the first council meeting. At that time, council had asked for some changes to the ordinance. Staff went back and made the requested changes, reintroduced the ordinance at the April 16th, 2012 meeting, which at, at that time, it was unanimously approved, so we're basically bringing it back for a third time tonight for the final adoption.
Are there, are there any technical questions for Eric? Okay. Seeing none, I will open this up to public comment. Is there a public comment on this topic?
My name's Robert Iler, and it's really time to okay this. The officers need the tools to take care of this problem. It's been outrageous in our neighborhood, and, you know, years ago, they had eight tracks and then cassette players. Nowadays, they got an extreme overpowered amplifiers that are just boom, 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 and it's, you can hear them coming two blocks away and going two blocks away, and whatever it takes to give the officers the right tools to do something about this matter, I think it's time. This is a, a little town, it's, people travel all the way over here, they eat, they stay in motels, and who wants to listen to that? I think the time has come to button that up. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this topic? If not, I'll bring it back to the council with the comment. I'd like to thank Eric Taylor and the city planning commissioners for putting this all together for us. It's been a long time coming. And thank you for the community support that we have on this. So, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance, adding Chapter 8.18, the noise regulations, to Title 8 of the Health and Safety Code of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
I'll second that motion.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item number 11. I see we have some guests in the audience regarding this topic. Receive a report from the city attorney's office and give direction regarding a social host ordinance.
After the presentation given, I believe, a couple meetings ago, we were asked to do a little bit of research on this topic. I put together a legal memorandum, which is included with the agenda. So, this evening, I'd just like to summarize that information for the public's benefit and receive further direction from the council. So, I started doing some research on local social, local social host laws. And basically, they are designed to hold private individuals accountable for underage drinking that takes place at parties or gatherings on property that they own, lease, or otherwise control. While providing alcohol to minors is illegal, and it's a crime, it's a misdemeanor under the law here in California, it can often be difficult to prove exactly who gave, you know, what alcohol to whom. So, when officers may show up to a party where there's underage drinking, yes, they can show that the minors are drinking and where they are, but making the connection between who purchased it or handed it over is not always so easy. As far as state civil liability, it's a little, it's a, it's a reactive situation where if you're gonna have civil liability, it's, first of all, it's limited to, to minors who are injured or who cause injury. So, if you're an adult and you have other adults drinking at your house, and they go out and injure somebody, the host is not responsible. But if you're a host and you have minors drinking at your house, and you know that they're minors, and they go out and injure themselves or somebody else, they could be held civilly responsible. However, this approach is very reactive. This doesn't prevent anybody from being harmed or help deter underage drinking. So, the social host ordinance kind of tries to fill that gap in being a little more proactive and also holding individuals responsible who host such parties. Basically, whoever the host is would be responsible regardless of whether they supplied the alcohol. If you own the property, or if you're leasing the property, and there are minors found to be consuming alcohol on your property, you could be assessed an administrative penalty for that. And so, what this would do is act as a deterrent, make parents more aware, make young adults more aware of who's at their house, of what they're allowing to go on, because they're not gonna want to be hit with that penalty. Whereas, it may have been too hard to prove before, well, you know, now it's, it's real easy to get at least a monetary fine. The, one big question regarding this laws is the effectiveness. And that seems to be up in the air. You get reports of both. I looked at two, you know, fairly comprehensive studies, one done in 2004 and one done in 2009. While they both said more studies need to be done as to effectiveness, they also agree that sort of the one, number one determining factor of whether such an ordinance could be effective is that you have to have a good public awareness campaign, because it really is that deterrent effect that you're looking for. So, if individuals aren't aware that this is out there, it's not gonna deter them from acting, or it's not gonna shape their conduct. So, so that, if, if you choose to go forward with such an ordinance, that has to really be partnered, a good public awareness campaign needs to be partnered with it. Police Chief Plack shared some statistics with us, going back to January 2010 to, I think it was the beginning of May or end of April. The Crescent City Police Department had received 248 noise complaints. Of those, about 119 related to loud music or parties. 14 of those were related to commercial establishments. So, the remainder, 105 complaints, basically related to residential noise disservices that may or may not have been some kind of party. However, the chief did also note that when officers went to these parties, the presence of minors consuming alcohol at these parties was not a frequent event, if, if at all. So, as, as much of a problem as underage drinking may be within the city limits or outside the city limits, as far as large party gatherings of minors drinking, that doesn't seem to be a big problem, but it could be happening on smaller levels. So, I guess I give you my recommendation is that if you choose to move forward with such an ordinance, I, I think the best bet would be to try to keep it simple, to partner it with a good public awareness campaign, and to use administrative fines as the penalty and go through the administrative process rather than trying to do any kind of criminal sanction.
Thank you. Are there any technical questions for Martha from the council?
Yes. Oh, thank you. Where would the administrative fines start at?
Well, that would be up to the council's discretion. I've seen, like, $2.50 for a first offense, $500 for a second, $1,000 for a third, all within one year of each other. But you could, you could set those wherever you choose.
Can I ask, if you're talking about $2.50 per offense, is that $2.50 per evening? If there's 20 underage drinkers?
Yes, that would be...
Is it 20 times $2.50?
Yeah, I think that would be considered one event. If, it wouldn't be per minor. I mean, that would, that'd be...
Okay. Thank you.
That would get expensive.
My question is more about the current laws, and if they, if, if we were to adopt a social horse, host ordinance, if they would be more, if the host ordinance would be more stringent than the current state law?
Well, it's not, I don't know that I'd say it's more stringent. I don't think there really is a current state law that addresses this. I guess, in one sense, it would be more stringent in that the, the level of proof isn't as high, like, if you're talking about sharing alcohol to minors.
So, my question is if Chief Plack goes out to a party, and there's a parent there, or an adult, and children, or minors, drinking, there is no, that's not against the law?
It is. There are different, a few different laws that they could be cited under contributing to the delinquency of a minor or furnishing alcohol to a minor. But the level of proof for those is, is much, much higher. You have to show a link sometimes, and you can ask Chief Plack about how successful he is with those. But...
So, this, so the social ordinance would just basically make them guilty automatically?
Yeah, although it's not guilty, it's responsible, is a term I brought to use.
But I mean guilty of, okay.
Right. They're responsible for what's happening on their property, whether they're there or not, as well.
Okay. And my only concern is, is for the parents that don't know what's happening at their property.
And that does happen. There is a few famous cases of even, I think it was a Harvard Law School professor who was hit with a hefty fine because his son was having a graduation party, which they thought was alcohol-free and was not. So, that was pretty embarrassing. But, you know, parents need to be informed as to what's going on and checking on, checking in with their kids. I guess there will be some instances where parents really don't know what's going on, but maybe that's a wake-up call that they need to find out.
Right. And then what about, like, if it's a, just a piece of property, and there really is no presence, like, it's just vacant land, and there's no presence, and maybe there's an out-of-town owner, and the kids are having a party, you know, if it's out kind of away from, I mean, I'm just, you know, thinking about, you know, you hear about the kids, "Oh, let's go out to such-and-such hole," or whatever area, and have a big party. So, what happens in that case?
Well, I think that would be more of an issue that the county would have to deal with.
Right, I know, but we're looking, I mean, part of your discussion was to talk to the county about adopting the same ordinance.
Right. I don't know if they would make a certain type of provision where, you know, if there's no dwelling, maybe it wouldn't apply. You could do something like that. In the city, we, we don't really have too many vacant lots where people would gather without being noticed. But you could do something like that, where, you know, if there's not a residence or something like that. But also, you know, we hold people accountable for nuisances even when they're not living on that property. So, that's, that's a policy choice.
Okay. And then my other question, or not question, yeah, I guess it's a question, was to the kids, if you give them a chance to talk about the town hall meeting that you had and, and what the results were.
Yes, I will invite the Friday Night Live group to be here, and we're happy to have them there, here. Chief Plack and I both were invited to that town hall meeting, and I learned a couple of things that were very significant, which is one of the reasons I wanted to have this on our agenda and consider it. And that is that we had Mary Dorman from State Farm as one of the guest speakers, and she explained that your homeowner's insurance will not cover an injury or accident on your property if you are the adult that owns the property and you have, you're serving alcohol to minors. And that was a big wake-up call for, you know, people who own a home. You might want to consider that you could lose everything if there was an accident when you are hosting a party for minors and alcohol is being served, even if you're not there. So, I thought that that was an important thing to know. I feel that this is a great educational tool and that we can partner with Friday Night Live and mitigate the expense. It has been identified as a possible expense for the city by them doing the public service announcements and information. So, at this time, I'd like to invite the Friday Night Live team to come up and make comments and address issues on how you have ideas to help educate the community about this. Be sure and introduce yourself when you come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Tim Tao. I'm a senior. And at the town hall meeting, I was in a focus group with the parents. And they were all full support, even if they were in their own responsibility, if there was their own child in their house. And although there are only three parents, they, I had a good amount of opinion of discipline and this, another word for it would be consequence actions towards the parents. And they felt that they, parents should be responsible for any sort of a trouble that minors would stir in households of their own or of another parent.
Thank you.
So, overall, it went pretty well.
Remember to say your name, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Eileen O'Gra. And I just wanted to say that overall, it went pretty well. We had about 60 people there, which is fairly good considering, I mean, it's the middle of the week, the weather was horrible, which just wasn't a good day. And I was in charge of the focus group with the community members. And there was quite a lot of community members there. I'd probably say about 17 of them. And they were all very in, in support of the social host ordinance and just combating underage drinking overall. And they felt that this was a good approach to it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah McMahon, and I had the focus group with the teenagers. And they were very interested in to hear what we had to say. And I had a question about if they felt comfortable in their own home drinking, or if they were more comfortable at a party, not saying that they did, but if they did. And they mostly went for at their own home. So, I thought that was pretty interesting.
Thank you. And the other important thing, and it's in our PowerPoint presentation, is that in a survey dated between 2008 and 2010, Delnar County's youth, use of alcohol was much higher than the state average. So, that's another thing that was a real eye-opener to me. And did Melody or Nancy want to say anything about, are you willing to contribute to the public service announcements? Because we would need help with that.
Hi, I'm Nancy Rivera, and I run all the Friday Night Live programs. And yes, we are willing to do all the PSAs and any campaign awareness for parents. And actually, that's one of the things that we were discussing, that even though we send letters to every single parent on the North High, we only have three, four, if you count me, because my daughter is in high school, were there. So, we need to do a campaign to aware parents. And actually, one of the things we were planning is just to write an article in the newspaper, "Parents, where are you?" You know, so we are willing to help any way we can to make awareness in our community.
Thank you. Chief, did you have a comment?
Evening. I, I'd just like to give you a little bit more clarification on this social host ordinance. Martha put a lot of time into it. This is a brand-new ordinance that a lot of cities are experiencing right now. So, therefore, you get the full, full spectrum, as far as some are just very generic and some are very, very involved. But I think what the, where we have the edge here is that we have the Friday Night people that want to bring this to the forefront, and they are seeing a problem in the community. And, and I applaud the council for being so open-minded and be able to move forward on this. But even though the, the numbers that I gave the city manager and Martha in regards to the, the calls for service that we have, which is 248, after that, I went back and we also did additional research on that. And we found out that parties with minors that were present and consuming alcohol since April 2003 to now, we had seven. Now, in regards to the question that you had in regards to what if they go to this property and, and have a party, now, this is where the administrative sites really does come into play here, because number one, is that property posted? That's the number one thing that you're gonna want to look at. And the second thing...
Is it what? Posted?
Posted. No trespassing. And this is where the administrative sites, we can give the owner of the property, particularly if they're not from here, a verbal warning. We don't have to go straight to the $250 mark on that. And also, by doing the administrative sites, the level of the elements of the crime is a lot lower than it is for the, the penal code, which contributing to delinquency of a minor or open alcohol beverage. And also, if there is a child that's involved there that is hosting this party, regardless, they are gonna be, give the administrative sites, the parents are gonna be advised of it because the parents are still responsible. So, I think that between that, the partnership that you want to establish with Friday Night Live, as well as, let's not forget about the programs that the police department is involved in with the alcohol beverage and control. And so, we, we are mandated to also make sure that there's advertisements whenever we do a, a, a shoulder tap or a decoy-type program. And not only are you stopping the kids from having the parties at their house, you're also having the alcohol being restricted to them from the stores. So, just like to make some of those clarifications that...
Any other questions for the chief?
I do, as well. I, I was just wondering if we adopted an ordinance similar to what we're talking about here, and there's also some criminal violations, is it either/or, or can one, one be fined by the ordinance and also go through the, the justice system?
Well, we can start off with the admini, they can always plead not guilty through the administrative sites and go through the Superior Court. So, there's not a problem with that as well. So, yes, we can. We can go either to, either way, either other.
I was wondering if, if the parents are gonna be held responsible and receive a citation, can we make the kids accountable as well, and maybe community service?
can we make the kids accountable as well and maybe community service?
Well, that's where you're going to need that, that's where you're going to need the help from the parents to do that as well. If they have a problem in trying to control their kid or, or they're having problems in making sure that this party doesn't go on every weekend or so, I'm sure the courts would impose a certain type of a restriction on that as far as moral latitude that Superior Court would have moreover than the administrative sites would.
And can the parents put a no trespassing sign on their, on their liquor cabinet?
Parents can do whatever they want.
And then the other thing I just want to mention is, previously working at the radio station, PSAs are great. They are by no means a campaign. You know, that, that radio station has a stack of PSAs this high and they try to get through them. But you really, if you, I, I feel we would be obliged to really educate the community about this ordinance. And that's going to take some money. I just want to be realistic.
Well, you know, I, I, and I got to give kudos to the Friday Night Live people because the prom this past weekend, the school resource officer was ready with alcohol testing samples and everything for individuals to blow into. Not one violation, not one violation was anybody. And I believe a lot of that is due to the Friday Night Live to bring this to the surface. So I think...
That's great. And I'm very impressed that we've only had seven parties in ten years.
Well, they go out into the county, just like, I mean, people don't bother them out there as far as, but if they have a party in town, chances are they know that the police are going to get called because of their neighbors going to be complaining.
Are you guys doing the same presentation with the board of supervisors? I mean, it sounds to me like that's where the biggest problem is, is in the county and not the city.
We need to have you come up to the mic, so if you want to make a comment. So, thank you, chief.
Okay.
Did you have...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as consequences for the youth offenders, our city manager was also there in our community leaders group. And there was a lot of discussion about what kind of consequences, including community service. And that would also depend on the support of the parents. And if it was, depending on what other kind of offenses they may have committed, it could be up to juvenile probation in the courts as well. So, but we, we, we can't impose community service. I, could we do that, Martha, in the ordinance? I mean, would that be, it would be more something that the schools or the parents would need to do?
Yeah, I, I, the only way I would see that happening is if you made it possible for it to be some kind of agreement where instead of paying the fine, the parent and the child agree that the child will do a certain amount of community service.
Or parent and child together, maybe?
Well, I mean, the parent, the parent would still be responsible. So if the child didn't complete the community service, the fine is still in effect or something like that. But I think the parent would have to also agree to that as part of the terms.
Right.
A question on community service. Would that mean that we would have to handle workman's comp for whoever would be doing community service? And would they be required to pay it?
I'm not sure exactly how that would work out. If that was the case, I don't think we would do it. Because we're not looking, you know, to expend more money on this. We're really trying to deter the actions upfront. So if workers' comp was required, which I'm not sure whether it is or not.
It used to be for community service, but the person who had signed up for community service was responsible for paying it.
We might be able to partner with the schools so that they can, you know, help guide a student that got in trouble this way with the parent and worked with the parent through Friday Night Live. Maybe they could ask them to join Friday Night Live as opposed to out-partying when they shouldn't. I don't know. We, we have, we have some kinks to work out. But I will open this up for public comment. Is there a public comment on this topic? Mr. Munger.
I'm Harley Munger from the county. I have a pottery shop. And I have a number of people coming through there who owe community service hours. They are required to pay a $25 fee to cover state comp. Also, on this ordinance, I would like to see it cover more than just alcohol, all mind-altering drugs or substances. I would like to see included.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on this topic? Seeing no other public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I'm, I'm wondering, I, I like the idea of, of the ordinance and I know that there's, there's a significant need. I, I think it's important to see or to encourage the county to buy in. Because if, if all we're really doing is pushing the issue out to the county and those kids are going to be getting in cars and coming back into the city, I, I don't know if we're, we're, we're making, improving the situation or if we're making it actually more dangerous. And I, and I just haven't resolved that in my mind yet.
That's a good point. The, Jean, you were working with Jay on a joint city-county meeting. Do we have anything lined up at this time that we could maybe add that to the agenda?
Yeah, we do not. But when we do get that lined up, we can add that.
How does that sound to the rest of the council?
I'd, I'd like to see it be a joint city and county effort in order for it to be effective. I just wanted to say, this, this really makes me ill. In Del Norte County, in this survey, and I just want, you know, for those parents that are listening, eight, let's see, eighteen percent of seventh graders drank one to two times in thirty days. That just makes me sad. So if you think your kids are not drinking, obviously, eighteen percent of us are wrong.
So with that, should we, is the council agreed to direct staff to add that to the joint city-county agenda with the county's agreement?
Yeah. And I'd like you to see, reach out to the board of supervisors and do the same presentation so that they're in agreement ahead of time, so that when we come to the table, we can actually do something effective.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we will close item number eleven and move on to item number twelve, the report on the Marine Life Protection Act. And Zach Larson is out of town, but we do have Mr. Richard Young, the harbor master, here to talk with us and educate us, answer any questions we may have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. My name is Richard Young. I'm the harbor master and CEO at the Harbor District. I was also a member of the regional stakeholders group along with Zach. Unfortunately, Zach can't be here tonight. For those of you who don't know both of us, Zach is younger, taller, and better-looking than I am.
I think he might have more hair.
But I was going to say, I think for the moment at least, I have more hair than he does, so. This was a long and contentious project, the entire Marine Life Protection Act issue. It started in 1999 when the law was adopted by our legislature and signed by our governor. The law mandates a network of marine-protected areas throughout California. The first area, well, first, there were two prior attempts to implement marine-protected areas. Both of those failed because of there were, of so much controversy, so much disagreement, that the Department of Fish and Game had actually given up on implementing marine-protected areas. And because of lack of funding, they were going to table the issue. At that point, a private foundation called the Resources Legacy Foundation, I think it's RLFF, and I forget what the second F is for, the Resources Legacy Foundation stepped up, found the funding from a number of environmentally-oriented foundations. And they created an entity called the Marine Life Protection Act Initiative, which was a team of people, facilitators, consultants, scientists, who were staffed through the Department of Fish and Game, staffed and charged with the task of developing networks of marine-protected areas throughout California. They started on the central coast from about Point Concepcion up to Pigeon Point near San Francisco. That was a very contentious process. I've spoken to many of the people who were on that regional stakeholders group. They felt betrayed and confused and not listened to during the process. But eventually, it wound its way through the legal process. And we do today have a network of marine-protected areas on the central coast. The next area where the process went was to the north central coast from about Pigeon Point south of San Francisco up to Point Arena, north of San Francisco. That was a less contentious process. We also have marine-protected areas in those, in that region as well today. Then they went to the south coast from Point Concepcion down to the Mexican border. That was another contentious project, process. The, those marine-protected areas, I think, have just been implemented. It was a long and drawn-out process, went through a lot of controversy. The north coast, from about Point Arena to the Oregon border, was the fourth area where marine-protected areas came. It was, started out as a contentious process here as well. There's a lot of concern. I've never met a fisherman, commercial or recreational, who likes the idea of marine-protected areas. Despite the fact that you can find biologists and conservationists and environmentalists who will tell you that they'll be good for the fishing industry, fishermen don't like marine-protected areas. Nor do they often trust people from the environmental or the regulatory world. So there was a lot of concern when the process came to the north coast. The, the county was fortunate, they got funding from the, from the Relief Resources Legacy Foundation to hire Zach Larson as a facilitator. He put together a series of meetings very early on in the process. It was very inclusive, brought a number of people to the table, brought our recreational fishermen, our commercial fishermen, the environmental community here in Del Norte County, and the tribal community. Everybody was at the table, everybody had input. There was a long discussion. People from that group, from those groups, were nominated to the regional stakeholders group. When the regional stakeholders group was selected, most of the people on the stakeholders group from Del Norte County had already been part of the process and had worked through the issues surrounding marine-protected areas. The, there were eight separate proposals that came forth from the public that went to that regional stakeholder group to analyze, to discuss, to, to bat around. There were numerous meetings over almost two years. There were meetings that were formal, there were meetings that were informal. There were small group meetings up and down the north coast, especially in Mendocino County. It was a very contentious process in Mendocino County because there's a lot of users who, you know, they're happy, they could live with the boundary being on one side of the river, but if it's on the other side of the river, they couldn't live with that. They could live with the boundary being at the north end of a beach, but not at the south end of a beach. So there are all these kind of micro-issues that kind of bubbled to the surface throughout the process. At the end of the day, after two years of, of meetings and, and much discussion, the stakeholders group recommended one array of marine-protected areas. That's the first time that it happened in California. No other region in California was able to bring everybody to the table, the environmental groups, the, the commercial fishing groups, the divers, the bird people, the recreational fishermen. Everybody was at the table. Everybody agreed on one final array of marine-protected areas. And so that was the recommendation that went forth. The tribal folks, they have their own issues. Tribal issues were, were difficult to deal with throughout the process. The federal government recognizes the tribes as sovereign nations. The state of California doesn't. And so the state of California throughout the process maintained that they couldn't treat the tribes differently than they treated any other recreational user. I think there was, well, I know there was consensus on the stakeholders group that the tribes deserve the right to continue their traditional ceremonial subsistence gathering activities that they've done since the tribes have been here on this coast. The consensus was that the tribes have evolved with part of the local ecology. So those tribal activities are kind of built into the, the local ecology. So that recommendation, that single unified array recommendation went forth. It was supported by cities, counties, I believe the city council wrote a letter, signed on to a joint letter supporting that unified array. It went up from the stakeholders group to the Blue Ribbon Task Force. The Blue Ribbon Task Force tweaked it in some ways to create a second alternative. And that second alternative went from the Blue Ribbon Task Force to the Fish and Game Commission. The Fish and Game Commission recommended the unified array, the array, the stakeholders array, as the preferred alternative. It's gone through the SEQA process and it's now very close to final adoption. People ask about the impact that marine-protected areas will have on our area, both for good and for bad. And I can give you my personal opinion. Personally, I don't think they're going to do much good. They're not necessarily the salvation that some people think they will be. I don't think they're going to do much good, but I think that through this negotiation process, through this long and difficult discussion of where should they be and, and what activity should they restrict, I don't think they're going to do much harm either. So the bottom line is, we can live with this. All the groups came together, everybody bought off on this final array. We can all live with it. And, and we're asking your support and the support of other entities so that the Fish and Game Commission doesn't tinker with or adjust or tweak that, that set of arrays that was the result of so much difficult negotiation. Because there are a lot of trade-offs in there. There's trade-offs in the, in the social side of things, in the economic side of things, and also in the biological and environmental side. So that's the story of how we got to the array that's before you. You'll see that there aren't nearly as many of them in Del Norte County as there are other places. And I think most of the stakeholders group thought that was a good thing. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Young?
I just wanted to say you summarized that very well.
Well, thank you.
In a short period. And I, my question was, because we've already supported this, my understanding is that they're considering a sub-option, which was not the main array that was chosen by the stakeholders group.
There was some discussion of that. And I think the request is that, that once again, we demonstrate the solidarity of all the entities on the north coast in favor of the stakeholders option.
Okay. And I just wanted to let the council know that Russ Crabtree from Smith River Rancheria also sat as a stakeholder to represent the tribe's interests.
We had, we absolutely, we had Russ Crabtree from Smith River Rancheria. At the time, we had Rewetti Wiki from Elk Valley Rancheria. And we had Megan Rocha from the Uroch tribe, all represented throughout the stakeholder meeting.
I have a question. When you voted to, stakeholders voted for this, was it unanimous? Or a vast majority?
It was certainly an overwhelming majority. I'm trying to remember if there was maybe one or two curmudgeons who, who held out at the end. But, you know, you have before you a letter that's signed by recreational fishermen, commercial fishermen. I think the one group that's conspicuous by its absence is the tribal members. But they were part of the negotiation process. They consistently throughout that process maintained the right to, to reserve their rights and to negotiate in a different venue with the state of California than the rest of us could. So they were there, they were aware of it, they, they were part of it. But they reserved the right to negotiate separately.
Personally, I'm completely against them. But I am in support of the process that we went through. And the fact that we had so many different people come to one agreement, I think, was pretty amazing. And sometimes you just have to go with the least impact. And I think this has the least impact on us. And I think this has the least impact on us.
So, thank you. That was a great summary. And it was a major coup to have the tribes come to the table. And also for the state to acquiesce to them that they do have different cultural needs and that they have different rights. So I, it is something that, you know, you can't please everybody all the time, or some of the people some of the time. But it is the law. And it seems like the best option we have is a very complicated process. Councilmember Shalung and I attended those meetings. And you had to have, match not just your region of arrays up, but with the connecting region of arrays so that it all connected clear down the coast. So that, it wasn't just our area that we had to consider. It was, it was the entire coast of California. So it was very, very complicated. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, any other comments or questions from the council? If not, I'll open that up for public comment.
I have some comments. And that is that I spent the weekend at the harbor and talking to fishermen. And also researching the pros and cons between the biodiversity versus the business of fishing. And I've come to the conclusion that there are some government types that won't be happy until they grind business into the ground. One fisherman's comment was that we don't need it. There are not enough fishermen fishing in our area. It's not only not needed, not warranted, but all the fishermen are against it. And she thinks it's a bunch of BS. So that's what I have to say.
All right. I'll open this up for public comment. Is there a public comment, comment on this topic?
I'm sorry, I forgot one more thing. And that is that I discovered the Department of Fish and Game has a $390 million budget. I think if we're going to open the door to this kind of thing, there's just going to want more and more and more. I think it's time to consider cutting their budget. And that's what I have to say.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council then. And council, do we have a directive?
I just, I just want to say I appreciate the, the summary. Last, last meeting, I, I was ill-prepared to, to make any kind of decision on this. But, but you made it very clear. And part of what's made, been made clear to me is that this is upon us. This is not something that we're going to stop. But this is something that we need to support the least restrictive environment that, that serves the citizens of Crescent City and, and Del Norte County. So I'm prepared to vote and I, but unfortunately, you're not going to get a motion out of me because I don't know what it should say.
I think all we need is a directive for a letter stating that the City of Crescent City Council is in support.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Certainly.
You know, I appreciate the background too. And one of, one of the things, when I checked this three years ago, when it started, was that the state legislature in 1999 passed this. And they didn't get very much opposition because, as they were doing this, they said they weren't going to fund it. And so that's why the opposition wasn't there 13 years ago. And as Mr. Young stated recently, over the past few years, different environmental groups personally funded it. And now it's going to become law, the state would not fund it. So we have to be very careful when our state legislature passes rules or laws that are not funded.
It's actually already a law though.
A law. But during that time, those 13 years, a few years ago, when this was starting to be funded, maybe our legislators should have taken a second look at that and maybe changed it. But that didn't happen.
I think, and I believe, if I'm correct, that the funding issue is more of enforcement of violations as opposed to anything else. I think that's where the funding, if Mr. Young could address that again?
Certainly. The, the funding for enforcement is, is really badly up in the air. The State Wardens Association, the Game Wardens Association for California, sent a letter to the Marine Life Protection Act Initiative stating that they didn't believe that we could enforce this, that the wardens couldn't enforce it. It's not necessarily general knowledge, but California has some of the lowest paid wardens in the United States. They're woefully underpaid and understaffed as well. And it will take substantial resources to enforce this. This is, you know, one more reason I don't think they're going to do much good. But I don't think that this array that we negotiated is going to do much harm either.
And it is the law.
And it is the law. And that's the sad fact of life. As I think I said earlier, I've never met a fisherman, there may be some out there, but I've never met him, who wants these things. But it is the law. And there are people in California who want these, these marine protected areas. And they were able to get the law successfully in place. And they also funded the implementation of it. So we have to live with it. And, and we hope it doesn't do much damage in the, in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you again. So that means that for all of us out here, we really need to pay close attention to our legislators and lobby them when we feel that there's some law that's coming through that would be an unfunded mandate or a mandate that didn't fit the needs of Del Norte, Del Norte County and, and our community. So do we have a directive to send a letter of support? That's all we need, right?
Yes.
Is there consensus with the council? Yes? Okay. There's only one, Councilmember Westfall's not in support, but the other four of us are. So we give you a directive to send a letter of support for the MLPA. Thank you. And thank you for being here, both Mr. and Mrs. Young. And we'll move on to item number 13, under new business, which is to hear protest to the weed and refuge abatement costs report, then consider and approve a resolution entitled number 201218, "A Resolution of the City of Crescent City Confirming Report of Costs of Weed Abatement and Assess Lots Within the City of Crescent City." And we have Mr. Taylor here.
Mr. Taylor, give a report. As you recall, on February 6, 2012, the city council passed a resolution declaring certain parcels of private property in the city to constitute a public nuisance. More specifically in regards to weed, weed abatement and rubbish removal of certain lots, vacant lots. That resolution set a time and date for a public hearing, of which any objections to that declaration would be heard. That was on February 21st. At that meeting, there were no objections. And at that point, council directed staff to begin the abatement of the nuisance. I'll say within that time, prior to that meeting, some property owners had actually abated the nuisance themselves and, and after the fact, some property owners had actually done it at their own expense, took care of the problem. So we moved forward with the abatement process. The government codes allows jurisdictions to either abate the nuisance themselves with their own forces or to contract out. In this case, the city decided to contract out for services. We received several bids for services, I think about four. We picked one we thought was, was the best and most reliable. Then on March 19, 2012, contractor actually went out and abated the nuisances. And this was by mowing the weeds and actually physically going out and removing the rubbish from the properties and disposing it at the dump site. So the next step in the process is to fix the cost of the nuisance to the property themselves. After tonight, and I'll go over the report after I get this brief presentation. If you approve the report, then we take that report to the county auditor. And then at that point, they add the amount of the assessment to next regular tax bill levied against the parcels. And they, that fee will be due and collected at the same time and manner of any ordinary municipal taxes. Now, I'll move back to the report itself. So basically, we're dealing with seven separate parcels here, but we have one property owner. Six of the parcels, which are out there at North Crest and Hoover, are all basically, together, they make one large parcel out there, although it's separated into several properties. So what we did on that, we actually took the cost for staff time, legal, and legal time. We're just, we're put equally, equal amounts across each parcel. And then for the actual cost of the abatement, what we did is we went out, we figured out the size of each parcel. And by determining the size of the parcel, we just affixed a percentage of the cost to each parcel to make it fair across the board for all the parcels. That's about all I have right now. I mean, it's, basically, it's the cost report for the abatement that was taken. And actually, let me add one more thing. I do want to take some time to consider, the property owner did, and I think everybody received his comments. So I'm not sure if we should take time to consider this or how we want to move forward with that.
We did all receive a copy of the comments and response or rebuttal, however you want to think of it. From, it says John E. Deal, but I believe it should be John. And that was just received today. So I believe all council members have had the opportunity to review this document.
Not really. We received it when we arrived tonight. So, no, we have not had time to actually really review it. I mean, it's a, you know, 10-page document.
I agree. And it's written in some legalese that takes a little bit of reading. Not something one can skim easily. And I, and I'm wondering if our attorney should help us with, with some of the points that Mr. Deal makes, maybe prior to making a decision on this matter.
What's the council's pleasure? Do you want to take the time to read it? Would you like our, the city council to summarize, or do both? Or table it till the next meeting? What, what, what would you like to do here?
I'm, I'm wondering if council is prepared to respond to, to Mr. Deal's comments?
I did read through it earlier. I could, I could just go through, you know, number by number and, and give you my quick response. As, you know, just whether I'm concerned about that particular point or not, or whatever my response is, I, that would be fine.
Okay. Well, is that all right? Then council agrees, we'll have Martha review this with us?
Okay. So these are objections that apply to all of the properties in the process. His first point, number one, has the city followed the proper procedures? A, the city has proceeded in excess of its jurisdiction. My response to that is no, the city has not exceeded its jurisdiction. The government code clearly sets forth a process for abating weeds and rubbish and dirt. In this manner, we've carefully outlined and followed the process, and this is the last step. The city is either stopped by acquiescence or barred by latches from its action. Those are legal terms. They are defenses in a lawsuit. This is not a lawsuit, this is a nuisance abatement procedure, so it's really not applied. He's kind of saying, you, you let my parcels have weeds for so long that now you can never stop me. And that's simply not the case. Number two, did the city have substantial evidence that the properties comprise public nuisances? The term substantial evidence, again, more legalese. The substantial evidence is not used in the government code. This is a decision that's within the council's discretion. When you viewed the report from the code enforcement officer and the pitchers, you determined whether the weeds and garbage and other accumulations constituted a public nuisance that needed to be abated. And you did that, and we're moving forward. He disputes that the property constituted a significant fire hazard. You know, I don't, I don't know what to say about that. He has a retired fire chief saying he didn't think it was a fire hazard. I believe our fire chief said that it was. So I believe that was his, was in your discretion to follow the opinion of your fire chief.
We do have Chief Wakefield here, if, if anyone wants to question that.
C, again, that harbor, that rats are vermin, were, were located on the property, was not supported by substantial evidence. He also claims this was a myth, et cetera, et cetera. I heard that when the brush was being removed, there was, in fact, large populations of vermin that scattered in all directions. That's probably a result of the trash accumulation that gets stuck in the kind of underbrush of the weeds. So that, that was a problem, as was suspected. Number three, even if no valid objections applied to the procedures or to the substantive issue, are the proposed assessments fair and reasonable? The procedure used for picking the contractor was what we would use under a small contract because this was not expected to be an extremely large amount. The city received four proposals. The proposal selected was the one where the contractor appeared to have the right experience, the right equipment, and the price was reasonable. Picking the cheapest is not always the best because you may have to go in for a second or third time. Maybe if they didn't have the right equipment or the right experience and fix what wasn't completely done right the first time. So I don't think there was a problem with the selection issue. And the city was very happy with the way the abatements turned out. At this point, we tried to fairly allocate the different costs of abating the properties. And that was done on a size proportionality basis. So I think I addressed all of his points.
Thank you. So, council, you have any technical questions here?
I have, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Questions up. Mr. Taylor, refresh my memory on how many dump truck loads it took to get rid of the stuff, the debris?
I can't tell you how many exactly truck loads there were, but I believe it was over around 12. Yeah, it was over 1,000 pounds.
And was that, is that included in these costs?
Correct. That was in the cost of the act, of the, the estimate that we received from the contractor. That was included in there. And I'll say most, most of the rubbish constituted, and he, Deal brings it up in his rebuttal here, that a lot of it was from homeless encampments. And so it did constitute, you know, some other issues out there. We actually received comments from some neighborhood businesses that they actually didn't feel safe going into their cars at night. So they were very happy it was cleaned up.
I have a couple other comments. I, I found it interesting that the former chief of Gasky, Mr. Souza, would, would say that even if that lot was located in the much hotter Gasky, that he didn't think it'd be a source of concern for fire. I, I think the neighbors that live up there would. And Mr. Souza, by the way, I did some checking, hasn't been a fire chief in over 20 years. So he probably doesn't know all the new codes and sections and liabilities. The other thing is, I found Mr. Deal very, this is just typical for Mr. Deal, if you're watching me and Mr. Deal, I'll tell you, is that you file things at the last minute and you quote, you quote case law from other states 25 years ago. But I find it interesting that you're saying that the city, there's a whole list of areas where the city could also get those people. And so he wants that enforced on other lots, apparently. And we can answer that Mr. Taylor's doing the best he can. He specifically gets someone named Dennis Gill to go and take photographs, which you can't really see in here, of Ninth and 101, which we know has problems. And you're working on them.
Correct.
And so Mr. Gill, or so Mr. Deal apparently is in favor of other lot owners being fined and cleaning up his prop, their property, but not his.
I was just curious, Mr. Ania, how you had time to check on Mr. Souza when we received this at 5:00 today?
I received it at, on email at probably 2:30. It was on 2:30, 2:00?
If I may, I actually, when I, on council meeting nights, I always get here to the office about 2:00. Soon as I got here, Mr. Taylor handed it to me like he should. He didn't get it until that morning anyways.
And I also happened to know-
And I immediately scanned it.
And I also happened to know the fire chief of Gasky's been there for like 20 years.
I immediately scanned it and emailed it to each one of you and advised you each that I would be bringing you a copy tonight.
I-
I wonder, Eric, if Mr. Deal is the type of man that would object to anything being done at any price, or if we had used our goat ordinance and had our goats in there doing it at a fraction of this cost, would he have been more amenable?
I, I doubt that. And I would say that the estimate received, I think, was very fair.
Plus, plus I think the rats might have frightened that goat.
Yeah, I don't think rat- Yeah, I don't think rats, goats are into vermin. I don't think-
Vermin, I'm sorry.
They eat tin cans, but they don't eat vermin.
Yeah.
You have-
Mayor, I would ask maybe that Chief Wakefield respond to the fire danger issues since there seems to be a discrepancy in what Mr. Deal's alleging and what our own fire chief has said.
I totally agree. Chief Wakefield, would you mind commenting?
If you have any concern about it, did anybody see the smoke in the air last Wednesday afternoon about five o'clock? We had a brush pile burning like crazy at Ninth and Owl. And it ran up the hill, and it probably was forty feet long by ten feet wide or so, burning in wet brush. Why it burned like that, I don't know, but it did, this lot that we're talking about, the trash in it alone would burn it up. It was full of all kinds of paper and anything that would blow in there for years. Plus, we have a chronic problem here where, you know, and I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but we probably put out ten or twenty homeless encampment fires every year where that, those people get in there. And actually, what usually happens, and Doug can probably attest to this, is they burn each other's camps. Somebody has something that the other one wants or whatever, and they burn them. So any brush patch around town that somebody can hide in has burned at one time or another. So it's definitely a fire hazard.
Any other technical comments or questions?
Eric, did we provide him with a detailed description of the charges?
Of the charges? I mean, the costing?
Yeah.
Yeah, he received the same report that you have in front of you.
Okay. Because he says that he didn't receive the proper accounting and that he was charged for unconnected work. So I'm wondering-
Yeah, I mean, I guess he could have elaborated on that a little bit instead of just making the claim, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open this up for public comment. If there's no other technical questions from council, is there a public comment on this topic? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I move to approve Resolution 2012-18, confirming a report of cost of weed abatement and asset assessed lots within the City of Crescent City.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Holly.
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Ania.
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work you've been doing on this, Eric.
I'd like to thank Martha Tucci, who was very helpful in putting-
Martha's research.
Keep up the good work.
We'll move on to item number fourteen, which is consider an application for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR 1968, funding for the City of Crescent City Fire Hall Seismic retrofit project.
And let, ask Mr. Taylor to do a presentation on this.
Again, as you'll recall, we did get our hazard mitigation plan back in February fifteen, 2011. That plan was approved. In order to be eligible for any funding under CALIMA or FEMA, the grant programs, you have to have this plan in place. Fortunately for us, we had the plan in place. You recall in 2011 that we were struck by another tsunami. This was declared by, it was a presidential declaration of disaster recovery was needed, so hence the DR 1968. And under the CALIMA's hazard mitigation program, once a disaster's declared, basically if they have enough funding and the pool of money, what they'll do is they'll open it up, they'll take a chunk of that and open it up to the entire state and allow all jurisdictions to apply for hazard mitigation projects that they might have. So we received notice of the funding availability. We submitted an NOI for the retrofit, seismic retrofit of the Crescent City Fire Department. And we kind of already had that on our plate. Back in 2005, the city used some CDVG funding to conduct a seismic retrofit study of the fire hall. So the building was constructed in 1957, and it's obviously out of compliance with current structural standards for earthquakes. Submitted the NOI, they changed it up this time around. Basically, the NOI was the, NOI stands for notice of intent, so for a project. We actually submitted five NOIs. And if you, you can actually get on CALIMA's website, and you can go to their grants page, and they'll show you all the NOIs for the entire state. There was quite a few. It was highly competitive. Basically, they came back to us and said that they approved our NOI. So the NOI this time around was the actual competitive process. So once they selected you through this portion of the process, basically then we were instructed to move forward and submit an application for funding, for non-competitive funding. And so that's where we're at at this point. We had staffs actually attended the training for that, to put the application together in Sacramento. Basically, we have to have the actual project that we want to do, the scope of work, we put that together, a detailed work plan. And what they have is called a BCA, which is Benefit Cost Analysis. So basically, they look at the, you know, the worth of the building and the worth of the project compared to the benefits we'll get out of the project over time. So at this point, in order to get the numbers that we require to fill out the Benefit Cost Analysis, well, we need to, basically, we talked to Vaneer Consulting Group to put together a study for us. And they actually have a pretty robust staff of engineers and other consultants to help in this. We're on a tight time schedule here. The application is actually due, it says June eighth here, but they actually changed it to June fifteenth. So we're really short in time on getting this completed. So we're asking them to help us to get some of the numbers as far as engineers' estimate for replacement cost of the building, to put together the seismic retrofit, to put together a plan of actually all the work that will be done to the building and costs involved for that. At this point, the grant is a seventy-five, twenty-five match, which means the federal government will pay seventy-five percent. We would be paying twenty-five percent of the cost. We submitted an NOI that we estimated the cost of product to be one-point-five million, which means that we would be responsible for approximately three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars of that cost. Matching funds can come in the amount of hard money, staff time, equipment time, any other of our time that we would expend on the project, we can use as matching funds. So again, breaking it down, the fiscal impact, the city's match could be up to three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars, but we would receive approximately one-million-one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars in grant funding. We've known for many years that this, we have a filling infrastructure, the fire hall needs the retrofit. Heaven forbid, in a disaster, that fire hall falls down, and the only department that serves the entire city is out of service. All the equipment that's in that facility is out of service. It would definitely further complicate the issue for the city. That's about all I have to add at this point. I mean, I guess there'll be a few questions here, and we'll, I guess I'll field those as they come up.
Okay, so I'll entertain any technical questions from council for Eric or even our city manager?
I have a couple technical questions.
Okay.
On this federal contract, would that be a firm price, or would it allow change orders?
I'm not, what do you mean on the federal contract? I'm not sure.
Well, assuming we get this money.
Okay.
Okay. Would that include a contract based on a firm, flat price? Or are there going to be-
With the grant, well, the grant, we would get grant funding up to the amount that we've asked for. Now, whether or not we spend all that money, that's, we would remain to be seen. We were not quite there yet in getting all the hard numbers on the project.
Okay, and I guess the big question is, where are we going to come up with three-hundred-seventy-five grand?
And that's where Mr. Plotso comes in.
I'm going to ask Mr. McDonald to help me, help me out here as well. I'm going to paint the big picture and then have Mr. McDonald get into the details of the financing and the funding. And there's two components of the funding. There's going to be the funding that we're going to need, you know, to get the assistance from Vaneer and Associates to help us put together the application. And just knowing that all of this staff time and money will go towards that three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar match. Mr. Taylor went to Sacramento and spent three days in Sacramento last week, training to put this grant application together and understanding the whole process, all that time that he spent traveling and going down there, spending time in class, you know, can be towards the match of the three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars. So there is going to be some staff time, and I'll have Mr. McDonald kind of address that. Big picture in our strategic plan and our facility needs that the city, you know, has right now. You know, we've identified, you know, Fire Department, Police Department, City Hall, Corporation Yard, you know, all have probably outlived their useful life and the needs of our, you know, operation of the community, for the community and the city. We need to kind of start somewhere. This grant is a great opportunity, you know, for us to proceed with the fire station. We've had a lot of discussion amongst ourselves within staff, you know, what is the best route to take for our fire station? And do we relocate it, build a new one, use the existing one? You know, the station is built nineteen fifty-four, I believe, fifty-seven, nineteen fifty-seven? That's pushing, you know, quite a, quite a long life for a station. It kind of boils down to that station is in really a good location, you know, for the services of this community. It's in a good location for, you know, in relationship to the other stations, you know, that Crescent Fire, you know, have and located that, or all of our volunteers that, you know, Steve operates, you know, sixty volunteers between the two, between the district and the city. You know, so it's in a great location. The building's just old and tired and doesn't meet the seismic standards of today. With the seismic retrofit, we will get pretty much a brand-new station on it because it's going to require removing the roof, removing, you know, some of the walls, you know, Mr., we're, Mr. Barnes can get into kind of more of the details of what it takes to retrofit the station. But, you know, in the end, you know, we're going to have, you know, I think, a really good facility, you know, to services community. Right now, we're really at a risk. We have a large earthquake. That building's going to fall in, and we're going to lose a lot of equipment. You know, each engine in there is probably three to four, five hundred thousand dollars, not to mention the hoses and the turnouts and all the other equipment that's in there. So this is a great opportunity. Financing, we're going to have Ken come up and talk about kind of the big picture of the financing and how we think we can get there with this.
While Ken's coming up, have you looked at other locations as possibilities?
We've talked about other locations. You know, the, you know, the city owns that property. We own the parking lot next to that property.
Isn't the tsunami zone though?
It's, it's, you know-
Sorry?
Yeah, and back to your other question, if you recall, we actually brought this once before for other funding under this program, another pre-disaster mitigation program. And I attended that training as well. The problem we had there, again, they wouldn't, what we looked at that time was to have them buy out the building, demolish the building, and we relocated somewhere else. Unfortunately, what happened there is since we already owned the property, they wouldn't pay for the property itself. So they'd only pay for the cost of demolishing the building, so it really wasn't feasible for the grant funding opportunity to relocate the fire hall. So this is a better option for us. Two, the tsunami run-up zone, if you look at the modeled zone, actually, though, it's on the firm map, it barely even touches the edge of the property, so technically, it's not in, on a firm map would say is in a flood zone. I mean, you could say it's modeled, I mean, you can run all different scenarios. I mean, the worst-case scenario, you have, what, thirty, forty-foot wave, and maybe goes all the way up to Nine Street, but is that a five-hundred-year event? Is that a thousand-year event?
But it's in the evacuation zone, so.
Sure, so, I'm sorry. Initially, so initially, obviously, any tsunami of that magnitude is going to be preceded by a pretty large earthquake. And so that buys us extra time to get the equipment and get the services out of that building, move them out of the zone, then it's well worth it.
And that's, you know, the strategy that we're looking at. Any facility that we have, even within the county, a magnitude earthquake like that, you're going to have to withstand, you know, that earthquake and have the building stand. Then we'll get our equipment, and we'll have some time, get the equipment out, and, you know, move it to, you know, the proper location in order to service the community.
How many square feet is that building?
I believe it's approximately six thousand square feet.
Is it really? It seems so small.
Plus, to build a new one, three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars is nothing.
No, I mean, well-
No, I was just curious about the square footage because it seems pretty small, and I, a million, over a million dollars to retrofit seems expensive to me. So I'm wondering how that number was arrived at.
I'll have the engineers answer that question.
Plus, it has upstairs, too, so.
And, you know, right now, there are some structural difficulties. The roof is leaking. We'll probably, in the next five years, spend about three-hundred-thousand dollars trying to fix this building if we don't, you know, go down this road, so.
How did you come up with three-hundred thousand?
Well, it's our match. And I'm just saying, we have, we have structural problems with that building right now.
I know. You just said that it would cost three-hundred thousand dollars to fix those problems. I was just curious what that number-
It would probably cost, I'm just throwing that idea out there.
It's a big number to just throw out.
Okay.
My other question was, you said in your staff report that the banner costs would be given to us tonight?
Correct. And I believe we're, we had a meeting on this today, and I believe that we're looking at about twenty thousand dollars.
Which will count towards that three-seventy-five.
Correct, correct. That's recoverable. I mean, it counts as our match.
Which, right, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, and you asked about the cost, and I know some, the initial cost in the two thousand and five report came up to about a million dollars, and it was well detailed out the cost because you're looking at the cost of doing the extra structural work, but then there's the cost of all that siding on it, asbestos. So you have some asbestos removal and abatement and other costs to factor in, plus you're talking about coming up with the engineered plans and the specs, so you factor all that in together, it adds up.
And I think that the Vaneer quote, he's already, Jim Aboidis has already done a lot of legwork when he assessed all of our buildings for whether or not we should retrofit or rebuild or improve or build new buildings, and he included the Fire Department. So he already knows the building pretty well, so probably it's costing us less to have him do it than it would if we contracted with some new person.
When he did all of the work for the city, it was only fourteen thousand, from my memory.
I don't know those numbers.
So twenty thousand seems high to me.
Well, I would say, we're asking for a more detailed study here, though, detailed document. We're asking for hard costs as far as engineer estimates for the construct, the replacement cost of the building, plus the cost and the putting together the plan for the retrofit study. So we're actually, we'll get more detailed plans here than what he had put together in the past.
And do we not need to go to bid on that?
On the, you know, the hiring Mr. or Vaneer Associates? No, we do not. It's within, you know, my authority, you know, to sign a contract, and since he's done a lot of work for us in the past, we know the quality of work. I think it's adequate to contract with him.
And just to add, the other benefit, too, is the short timeframe we have here, so we're familiar with his work. I mean, we're really in a crunch, and we're actually lucky that he's willing to step, step up and do this for us in time that we've asked for.
I agree. So are we ready for Mr. McDonald's?
Yeah.
Dollars and cents?
More cents than dollars.
Hopefully both. This one, because it's basically for every dollar we spend, we're going to get three for that kind of ratio, and the availability of these kind of grants don't happen very often. So I wouldn't be in favor of spending three-hundred thousand dollars on almost anything, but to pass, you know, a million-one away for spending three-hundred-seventy-five for a facility that's not really workable, it'd be nice if they saw the long-term picture and maybe decided to spend three million dollars and build a new, new facility and a new location, but that's what we've been trying to find, and nobody's willing to fund anything like that. So this basically takes our, our old antiquated building and brings it up to current standards, and it should serve us for, seismically at least, for the next ten to twenty years.
And it's not hard cash, it's matching funds, so.
Yeah, so it would be some staff costs that we would be spending. I mean, some projects may not get the attention because we're working on this one, but it's not going to be a direct out-of-pocket cost. We haven't quite figured out what the amount's going to be. I'm working on the budget as we speak. So this kind of now is- So, this kind of now is, do we want to go through and prepare the application first and foremost, and then second, if we do, then Gene and I start working on how do we fund it? When does the timing come in? It's a 36-month grant, but it may happen over a 24-month period, so we need to look at, at some options for that. Financing something like this over 10 to 20 years would be a lot more cost-effective, wouldn't dip into our reserves as much, and it would, it would definitely match the cost of the contribution or the match to when we get the service back from it.
We have, we have reserves.
When do we have to pay that grant? When do we have to pay it off?
That was one of the things Eric and I discussed today, and there isn't a timing. A lot of times, grants will say you have to put that 25% upfront. So, we're anticipating it's going to be a progress, so as they spend their $3, we'll pony up our dollar, whether it be staff costs. I mean, we're going to be spending money before they've incurred $1 because of the training we've done, the meetings, the application preparation, this contract, so we should be ahead of them for a while, but I'd still like to get a more accurate timing so that I know, okay, this is a 20-month project and it's going to be budgeted over two years.
So, one of your proposals may be to go out and get a loan?
Yeah, there's different types of financing available for stuff like this and we'd look at it. Gene and I thought maybe 4%, 5% max would be the rate, but I think with, you know, we're not, we don't have to rush into this at this point in time, but I think with a little bit more time, we could find something even a little bit more cost-effective.
Any other questions for Ken? Okay. I'd just like to make a comment that that was a great job in a competitive notice of intent for you to get us eligible, so thank you, Eric, and the rest of the staff who put all the time into doing all of that hard work. And I think it is our responsibility to ensure that we maintain the fire station. With this grant opportunity, I mean, this, I feel like it's something that we can't pass up, but we also have the responsibility to protect our assets and our volunteers. So, with that, I will open it...
Which is why I'm just concerned about the location. If we're going to invest that much money into the evacuation zone, I just worry about that.
Do we have public comment or Mr. Wakefield, you want to, Chief Wakefield?
Mr. Wakefield, address that kind of question of council member.
I was just going to say that as far as that evacuation zone is concerned, if, well, first, historically, in '64, the wave didn't touch that location. The fire hall functioned through that whole event. But also, and I think Gene alluded to this, or at least he did in, in talking to me, is that if we have the Japan-type event, the whole downtown is probably history anyway. We're not going to be saving anything regardless of what's there, but when that event happens, it's pretty hard to know when that's going to be. So, you know, that location is just ideal for every other day. It's right at Fifth Street. It's a quick up and down, north and south. You hit the highway quickly, you can go to A Street quickly, and those are the days where we really make the differences, where we can get somewhere quickly and save some lives or some property. And, you know, I'm not sure where else we could go. We, we looked at that when Veneer, Veneer was doing their first little project and, you know, we came up with a few ideas, but there's not many that really come close to where we're at and for the downtown area, so...
I agree with you. I just have a hard time believing that the federal, was it FEMA?
It's FEMA, it's a FEMA grant.
Yeah, that they're going to grant dollars to retrofit a fire hall in a tsunami zone, so I'm just...
It's, well, it's not technically in a tsunami zone. I mean, it's, you're talking about a tsunami zone that's in the planning phases that some people, that they're trying to work out these issues now, but on the firm map, it's not in a flood zone.
And...
And that's what they're going to base it on. And the other thing I would add too, there's high, there's a high probability of us getting a rather large earthquake without an accompanying tsunami too. I mean, it's not always going to be followed by that, so there's good possibility we might just experience earthquakes.
Chief, I'd like to ask you a question. What do you value the engines that are in that firehouse? We had an earthquake tonight.
As far as their value today?
Yes.
Well, they're probably, you want replacement cost? To replace them, you're probably, you know, a million-two, maybe, maybe a million-three.
Okay.
More than, it's a lot of money.
Yes.
And the other thing I was going to say about the evacuation zone versus the run-up zone, the tsunami thing, I was involved in designing that based on the studies that whoever did, and, you know, we arbitrarily chose Ninth Street as the cutoff because it was an easy line to educate the public. The actual, if you look at the models, it doesn't go anywhere near Ninth Street, especially from like I Street and above where it runs, and as it did in '64, it runs down to L Street and M Street and down into the lower part of the harbor, and so, you know...
So, you put my house in the tsunami zone?
Just because we like to watch you run.
Yeah.
Well, Chief Wakefield, the area in Safeway Ray's Shopping Market is at, what do you think of that location?
That's where the tsunami went in '64. It went down through there.
All right. So, is there any other location that, that would be as accommodating as where you currently are, in your mind?
Well, I mean, there's, you know, any number's a location, but you're talking about private property that you'd have to buy and move people and then the total, the overall construction cost of a fire station, three, four, five million, I imagine, you know, as far as financing, this is the best deal in town, so I don't know.
Yeah, and I would add, I think we're very fortunate to actually have been chosen for this funding. I don't know if we'll ever be chosen again for funding under any of these programs. They're highly competitive. I think a little of the edge we had is we were an affected community under this declaration, so that gave us a little more consideration.
And if another grant later on comes along, it's not like we can't fix it, you know, but right now, it's worse.
And it definitely needs work. So, at this time, since we've had enough discussion, I believe, do you have one more comment?
Well, it's not really, it's kind of an absurd idea, actually, but I just need to float it out there. Is there any way that we can attach a police department to the fire department? I mean, if, if we're going to be into it, a million-five?
We, we've looked at this, we studied this already, looking at combining, you know, even the City Hall, Police Department, Fire Department. It just, it's just not economically feasible for us at this time.
Okay.
That's the unfortunate part. I mean, the cost alone, like I said, trying to acquire, even trying to find that, that size of undeveloped property within the city limits is almost impossible. That's in a strategic location. You know, you'd be looking at, like Steve said, buying out other property owners, demolishing those buildings, and it'd be quite a bit of expense incurred.
Just a thought. I know we need both.
It, it's not an absurd idea and we, we, we did do the study when Veneer came through and went through all of our buildings and that, that notion did come into play and we did talk about it, but as Eric said, it's not quite feasible for us to do and...
And Mayor, our facilities are in our strategic plan. You know, this lines up with, you know, what we talked about, and we will be looking at, you know, Police Department next and then City Hall. You know, so there, there are challenges for us, but we'll keep plugging away at it.
Well, it doesn't hurt to apply, so...
Do we need to have public comment?
I just had one more thing to add because I think all of us agree with you, Rick, that we need to do something for the Police Department, and has it been considered to build up on that parking lot adjacent to the Fire Department?
To expand the police station or to build a fire station there?
To expand the police station.
And that's something...
So, have you, so you'd have ground parking and then you would have your police station up above?
Right. And that's something that we've been looking at, you know, how do we improve on the facilities we have and the locations we're at, and that's something we will be looking at. And I, I believe we probably will be looking at maybe some more CBPG funding, maybe through a planning and technical systems grant to start putting a plan like that in place for the Police Department, and I think we'd already talked about this. Fortunately for us, this opportunity came up in advance of that, so...
We also looked at the 501H Street property right behind the fire hall.
Right, we did. We did. So, we, we've, we've already talked about that idea, Councilmember Westfall, and, you know, we're, we're, we're working on getting each one of our facilities up to the standards and codes that the laws require, such as the retrofitting, and also offering healthy environments for our staff. So, we're, we're working on it and I think that this is a great opportunity. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment, though we haven't had any public comment opportunities. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the council.
I'd, I'd make a motion, I think, to direct staff to enter into a contract with Veneer Construction Management, Inc., and move forward with the application process.
Second.
Are you going to put a cap on the contract amount? Not to exceed?
Twenty, 20,000?
Would that be sufficient?
It's included in the 375 that we have to match anyway.
It could have gone out instead.
Is there a consensus in the room?
It's 20,000?
Twenty-one thousand. It's 20,850, so 21,000 would be our recommendation.
Not to exceed 21,000.
And I'll second that again.
All right. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yeah.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
I have one more question.
Everybody?
Is it okay?
Sure.
Where's the 21,000 coming from?
Matching funds.
No, not for the, no, how are we going to pay for the 21 grand?
We have to do a little budget transfers. We have about 10,000 available in the Fire Department and we found about 11,000 available in other departments to, to make sure there was an adequate amount to cover this.
Okay.
So, it wasn't specifically budgeted, but with things that we haven't done, we can move around.
I'm always curious when you say we found 11,000 dollars in other departments, where?
Unencumbered, it's not spent.
It, it's unencumbered funds.
Budgets are fluid.
All right, okay. All right. We'll move on to item 15, City Council Items. Do we have any legislative matters we need to discuss? Thank you, Chief Wakefield.
Mayor, I provided some league updates in the packet, you know, for the City Council members, and I also wanted to talk about the next couple of meetings of the Redwood Empire Division, where they have their legislative meetings in the morning and then business meetings in the afternoon. The next meeting is in Eureka on May 18th. There's information in the packet, starts at, I believe, 8 o'clock in the morning. The, and goes, you know, through the evening. The meeting in July is hosted by Crescent City, and just wanted to make sure that that's on everybody's calendar and we're working out the details to...
And we're asking for those council members who are interested in attending to let you know for the May meeting in Eureka, if you have a deadline that you'd want...
I need to know probably by tomorrow.
By tomorrow?
So, if council members are interested in going, so we can get that back to the league and make that payment.
Okay, so notify you and then you'll register those of us who wish to attend.
Correct.
By tomorrow?
Yes. I could probably slide it another day or two. 18th is coming up, so is there a timeline in the packet?
It says 11th of May.
So, what's today's, I got four days. Friday, Friday. So, if you let me know, you know, by Thursday, so I can at least let them know on Friday, that would be helpful.
Okay. And then also the matter that we're hosting, which I'm very excited about, we're hosting the Redwood Empire League California League Cities Division Meeting, July 13th, here in Crescent City, for any council members who didn't know that yet and for the public. So, we will be showing off the city of Crescent City and possibly some other sites, maybe the harbor. We're putting together a packet that we're, we intend to hand out in, at the May meeting in Eureka, hoping that some people will take advantage that are attending our hosting of the, this, the League's meeting in July to possibly bring their spouse or their families or friends. And our city clerk has put together, this is a draft of a little brochure highlighting activities that other council members from other cities could take advantage of while they're here or their families. And we, so we'll be putting together a welcoming packet that we'll be handing out in May down in Eureka, so people can make plans if they want to come and stay a day or two longer. And then item B, the League of California Cities Major Bill List, I believe we've been getting notices from Sarah Rounds, our new Mary Creasy replacement. So, if there's any questions or comments or you have any reports?
Provided what was being given us as an update in your packet at this point.
Okay. All right then, Ms. Westfall, would you like to report out any city matters that you've...
Yes, I attended Tri-Agency's Economic Development Committee, Delmar's Solid Waste Committee, Tea Party Candidates Forum, which I thought was a lot of fun, the Triplicates Forum for Candidates. There, I wanted to report out that there's been a theft of candidates' lawn signs and that there will be a meet and greet at the fairgrounds tomorrow night, potluck put on by the Tea Party. There are two business opportunities I'm aware of that people can start for under $1,000. One is that the pet store on Third Street currently buys crickets and worms and other little things outside of this area. So, I think that would be a tremendous business for someone to start here locally. And the second one, Gene, I didn't recall hearing if people can raise bees in the city limits, but we have Colony Collapse Disorder, which is killing the bee population, and for under $1,000, somebody could get into the beekeeping business, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Shalom?
Thank you. On the legislative matters, Mr., I'm sorry, on the legislative matters, AB 1551, Mr. Plack, I was just curious if you had reviewed that legislation that's being proposed? AB 1551, which is requiring public employers to assume liability for peace officers, public safety employees, personal auto use. Okay. We have a copy in our agenda. I'd like for you to take a look at it, and I mean, on the...
I'll give you guys can direct that to me and I'll take a look at it for you guys. Have the mayor, have Chief Plack take a look at it.
However you'd like to handle that, Mr. Palazzo. And then I wanted to thank Eric, oh, where'd he go? Eric Taylor, I understand we lost the opportunity to receive the grant for the ballpark, but he did a lot of work and I knew he was very passionate about it, so I wanted to thank him for that. I attended the Americas Wild Rivers Coast Five-Chamber Mixer, played in the Costa Golf Tournament, we took first place. Attended the Solid Waste Management Association Meeting and wanted to let the public know that the Solid Waste Task Force is hosting a public workshop on May 10th for people to comment on some solid waste issues. And attended the Coastal Expo Home Show and was, just wanted to report that Jack Penning, who is in charge of the marketing campaign, was there hosting the booth for the airport, and he said that since they've started the Fly CEC or Fly Crescent City campaign, the bookings have gone up 20%. So, I think that's excellent. I'm very, very happy about that. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. On this last Saturday, I had the honor of serving tamales to, to Councilperson Shaloon while she was playing golf, as part of the Costa Golf Tournament, so I was glad to participate there. I did participate in the Tri-Agency meeting, Lafco meeting, Solid Waste Management meeting, and this month, I'll be participating in the Senior Center Board Training that's going to occur in mid-month, and so I'll be spending a nice Saturday there, and yet another board training, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Let's see, I went to the Airport Authority Meeting, Solid Waste Meeting, and I also attended the Five-Chamber Mixer, which was very good, to see a lot of different people there, from different cities.
Okay. We, I know, it's hard to remember, it's like, I have my little calendar book now that I write everything down, if I can remember to write it down. We all have received an invitation from the commander of the Coast Guard Group with the changing of the, change of command, it, and it's slated for May 18th, which is a Friday, at 11:00 aboard the Coast Guard Cutter Dorado moorings, and some of us, unfortunately, on the City Council, will not be able to attend, because we will be down in Eureka at the Redwood Empire California League of Cities Meeting, but we have had our Madam City Clerk offer to attend as representation to the city, and any council member who would like to attend, I believe they asked for an RSVP, they sent us a lovely invitation, and also an email invitation, so if you could please reply and let them know if you're able to go, and also remember to contact Mr. Palazzo if you want to go to Eureka instead on the 18th. I attended the Redevelopment Agency Succession Meeting on the 18th, and our next meeting, we kind of did an educational meeting at that time, and had some great questions asked, so we were preparing research, and we'll have answers for our next meeting, because we, which will be May 9th at 1:00 here at the Flynn Center, and we need to reply to the state if we want some exceptions or acceptance of our plan for dissolving the RDA by May 11th. So anyone's welcome to come to the meeting on May 9th here at 1:00. I also attended the County Supervisor's Debate on May 1st, and there was a very good turnout, and so thank you to the Triplicate for hosting that. I attended the bid meeting on May 1st, and I'm hoping that they will take up the option to submit a work plan to us. I attended the Home Expo, and it looked like it was a terrific turnout, it was a beautiful day, there were some wonderful displays, and it's very exciting to hear from Councilmember Shaloon that our reservations for flying have gone up by 20% already. I attended the Art Gallery Mixer and our Ethics Training, as did we all, and the Delnart Solid Waste Authority Super Committee, and also got, had the opportunity to meet with Congress and Mike Thompson when he was here. So with that-
Madam Mayor, just FYI, that AB 1551 is going to the floor of the Assembly as early as Monday.
You know, I, I think, regarding that bill, I think, Chief, we have a policy in place. That's regarding public safety, using their own personal vehicles while on duty. I think you have a policy in place on that.
So with that, I will adjourn to our next meeting, which will not be the City Council Meeting, but a joint City Council-Fire District Board Meeting, May 15th at 2, at 5:00 at the Washington Boulevard Fire Hall, and then we-
Mayor, if I could, that meeting, we're anticipating the last about an hour, hour and a half, and then afterwards, we would like to adjourn to 8th and F Street for a demonstration burn.
Which we've, it's long awaited, so.
What time is that?
It starts at 5:00 at the Washington Boulevard. So we're adjourned, thank you all.